This way, but um, you know, I asked a couple of weeks ago about this, this study about should we do a study on the Holy Spirit? And there was kind of overwhelming, yeah, that sounds like a good idea. So that's where we're going. I don't have a clue how long we're gonna be in it. Um, I know what direction I want to head with it. But um, just it's, this is a subject that I think is important for us to understand. Um, and so we're gonna, we're gonna dive into it. Uh, this is my title slide. I purposefully went like overly extravagant just because of the nature of how people view the Holy Spirit. Um, and so, and some people, and so, um, let me pray and then we'll, we'll dive right into this study tonight. Let's pray. Well, God, we thank you just for another night to be here. I thank you for those who came out tonight to be a part of this study. And I pray that as we get into this study, God, that you'll just use your word to speak to us. Give us an understanding of who you are, um, help us to, to be able to have clarity, um, on things that are important. And, and uh, God, I pray that you'll help me to be able to be clear and, and to uh, not be in any kind of errors. This is a, a difficult subject because we're talking about you. And, and uh, God, just, just help us to, to be able to understand in the way that, that we can. It's in Jesus, I pray amen. So I feel, I feel that churches, and I'm not just in our area, but like all over the world today, uh, have such a different view of the Holy Spirit. You'll have this church has this view, this church has this view, that view. Uh, there's groups out there that they, they even go as far as thinking that they can manipulate or harness the power of the Holy Spirit in order to, uh, in order for their will to happen. And, and they won't say it like that, of course. They're not gonna, they don't, well, some do, but they don't come out and say those words. But, but if you look at their theology, you look at their teaching, that's what they're teaching. Pretty much a manipulation of you can bend the Holy Spirit to work in your favor, in your will. And then, of course, there's other groups that go as far to just completely and totally ignore the Holy Spirit. And so then what, what you have in the middle is the groups that are just confused usually. And, and uh, so the goal of this study is gonna be to bring about clarity to the Holy Spirit. Uh, we're gonna engage in Holy Spirit theology, okay? And this, we're gonna get right into the first uh, thing on your notes here, which is the study of the Holy Spirit is known as pneumatology. Okay, think like a pneumatic nail or something. P E or P N E U M A T Ology. I guess M A T Ology, sorry, I'll be more correct. Pneumatology, so, so pneuma in the Greek means breath. It also means wind, and it also means spirit. So that's where pneuma, pneumatology, the study of the spirit. And we're gonna take a look at the Holy Spirit's identity. We're gonna take a look at how and when people receive the Holy Spirit, not all this tonight, of course, but this is throughout the, the course of the study. We're gonna look at the role of the Holy Spirit. We're gonna look at what it means to be filled with the Holy Spirit. That's a question people ask. Um, we're gonna look at whether the miraculous gifts of the, of the Spirit are still relevant today. Uh, we, we've actually gone into that before, but we'll dive deeper into that in this study. And then, and there's, there's more that we'll go into, but those are just a couple of the topics. And I want to encourage you too, throughout this study, uh, or especially tonight, if you have any questions, think of that. And, and we'll, we'll talk about that at the end. That could, um, it can be something that we dive into, just like these other things. Like what does it mean to be filled with the Holy Spirit? If that's a question, we'll dive into that in the study. So, but, but really as a way of introduction into this study, uh, I think that it's important that first, before we go into any of this other stuff I just mentioned, that, that first we look at a foundational understanding of the Godhead. It's important that we do that. So we're gonna start with a look at the Trinity first. We're looking at God, uh, the Godhead, the Trinity first. And before we begin, we need to understand that the nature of God is far beyond us. I say that all the time, but I can't say that enough. The, the nature of, and, and, and an understanding of who God is, he's just so far beyond us. And uh, because of that, he's so set apart, we can't fully comprehend really the complexity of his nature. We, we just need to remember that as we engage in this study, there's gonna be some times where things just sound so foreign to us because they are, because they're supernatural, they're of God, not of us. And uh, while I say that on one hand, at the same time, we can understand enough to help us be able to grasp some of the concepts that we're gonna encounter in this study while we move forward. So uh, just, just remember that as we dive into the study. But I wanna start really by showing you a video, okay? And it's a funny video, but it's also a video that will hopefully kind of help us understand the Trinity a bit better. And some of you might have seen this video, it's, it's pretty old, but um, here's a video that will maybe help us understand the Trinity a little bit better.
Okay, Patrick, tell us a bit more about this Trinity thing.
Yeah, Patrick, tell us.
But remember that we're simple people without your fancy education and books and learning. And we're hearing about all of this for the first time, so try to keep it simple, okay, Patrick?
Yeah, real simple, Patrick.
Sure, there are uh, three persons of the Trinity, the Father, the Son, and Holy Spirit. Yet there is only one God.
Don't get what you're saying here, Patrick. Not picking up what you're laying down here, Patrick. Could you use an analogy, Patrick?
Sure, uh, Trinity is like uh, water and how you can find water in three different forms. Liquid and ice and vapor.
That's modalism, Patrick.
What?
Modalism, an ancient heresy confessed by teachers such as Noetus and Sibelius, which espouses that God is not three distinct persons, but that he merely reveals himself in three different forms. This heresy was clearly condemned in Canon 1 of the First Council of Constantinople in 381 AD, and those who confess it cannot rightly be considered a part of the Church Catholic. Come on, Patrick.
Yeah, get it together, Patrick.
Okay, uh, then the Trinity is like uh, the sun in the sky, where you have the star and the light and the heat.
Oh, Patrick, come on, Patrick. That's Arianism, Patrick.
Arianism?
Yes, Arianism, Patrick. A theology which states that Christ and the Holy Spirit are creations of the Father and not one in nature with him. Exactly like how heat and light are not the star itself, but are merely creations of the star. That's a bad analogy, Patrick.
You're the worst, Patrick.
All right, sorry, the Trinity is like uh, this three-leaf clover.
I'm gonna stop you right there, Patrick.
Yeah, hold your horses, Patrick.
You're about to confess partialism.
Partialism?
Yes, partialism, a heresy which asserts that the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit are not distinct persons of the Godhead, but are different parts of God, each composing one-third of the divine.
And who confesses the heresy of partialism?
The first season of a cartoon program, Voltron, where five robot lion cars merge together to form one giant robot samurai. Obviously.
I've never heard of Voltron.
Of course you haven't, it's not gonna exist for another fifteen hundred years now, Patrick.
Yeah, get with the program, Patrick.
I mean, really, Patrick.
All right, I'll try again. Uh, the Trinity is like how the same man can be a husband and a father and an employer.
Modalism again.
All right, then it's like the three layers of an animal.
Partialism revisited.
Fine, the Trinity is a mystery which cannot be comprehended by human reason, but is understood only through faith and is best confessed in the words of the Athanasian Creed, which states that we worship one God in Trinity and Trinity in unity, neither confusing the persons nor dividing the substance, that we are compelled by the Christian truth to confess that each distinct person is God and Lord, and that the deity of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit is one, equal in glory, co-equal in majesty.
Well, why didn't you just say that, Patrick?
Yeah, put the people around and worship, Patrick.
Would I tell you, I have went through those literally today.
Did you really?
On the internet.
Oh, that's great.
And every time you bring up an example of this to someone, that's exactly how they respond. Like, it's, it's like, oh, that's modalism.
That's modalism, Patrick.
So how do I?
Yeah. So it's confusing, right? Um, as funny as that video was, like it does point out the heresies of trying to explain the Godhead, trying to explain the Trinity. But uh, if you look at the bottom of your page, you see a part of the Athanasian Creed down there in the black, um, on the left side. And I wanna, I just wanna look back at that part of the Athanasian Creed, which brings about probably the best summary of the doctrine of the Trinity, which says, "We worship one God in Trinity." He said it really fast on the video, so I'll go slower. "In Trinity in unity, neither confounding the persons nor dividing the substance." And maybe in an attempt to put it a little bit more simply, the doctrine of the Trinity, and this is gonna be number one here. The doctrine of the Trinity is that God is absolutely and eternally one essence, subsisting in three distinct ordered, in ordered persons without division and without replication of the essence. It's still long and complicated, pretty much, but to fill in your blanks, it's one and three. Eternally one essence subsisting in three distinct and ordered persons. And since this study is on one person of the Godhead, we're not gonna spend too much time on this point. I mean, we could, we could spend so much time on that point alone, but we need to move forward, okay? We're gonna give like the crash course on the basics of the Godhead. And I promise, we need this in order for us to understand the rest of the study as we move forward. Uh, so uh, just, just part of, part of, more of the crash course is that we, in this number two, that we see the Trinity in the very beginning of Scripture. And we know that, right? We, in Genesis 1:26, what does it say? "Then God said, 'Let us make man in our image, after our likeness.'" Us, our, our. You know, God's not speaking, um, he's not crazy, right? He's, he's speaking to each person of the Godhead. It's, it's God speaking, uh, not to himself, but to himself, if that makes any sense at all. And we see the Trinity also in more detail in John, chapter one, when we, we, we see the Father and we see the Son, right? But also, uh, the, the entire Trinity, uh, is actually mentioned in proving that Jesus is God the Son. The entire Trinity is mentioned there. And then in Matthew, chapter three, which if you have your Bible, go ahead and turn there, because we'll read this in a second. Matthew, chapter three, you get to see all three persons of the Godhead interacting at one time when Jesus gets baptized, uh, by John. And so Matthew, chapter three, in verse 13, we'll just read verses 13 through 17. Let me get a drink of water. John, uh, not John, Matthew 3:13 through 17 says this. "Then Jesus came from Galilee to the Jordan to John to be baptized by him. John would have prevented him, saying, 'I need to be baptized by you, and do you come to me?' But Jesus answered him, 'Let it be so now, for thus it is fitting for us to fulfill all righteousness.' Then he consented." And when, here's the part, "When Jesus was baptized, immediately he went up from the water, and behold, the heavens were open to him, and he saw the Spirit of God descending like a dove and coming to rest on him. And behold, a voice from heaven said, 'This is my beloved Son, with whom I am well pleased.'" And so we see the interaction of the Godhead here, all three at once. And so that takes, that takes out of the picture the idea, uh, if you ever speak to somebody like, like a Muslim, or even a Jew, even a Jew, the, the concept of, of one God and three persons is heresy to them. They, they don't, they don't believe that there's three persons of the Trinity. But right here, we clearly see that there is. Once again, in Genesis, we see that, and John, chapter one, we see that. And there's elsewhere in Scripture too. Uh, but, but just remember, there is only one God, this is number three here, there's only one God. Gotta remember that, it's, as, as we try to explain the three persons, we, we, there's not three gods, it's one God. And the one, and the only God consists of one simple essence. That's the next uh, thing on your notes, one simple essence. And I gave you some notes, uh, you see down there, it's in black and it's pointing up to number four. That one God, the one God, the only God consists of one simple essence. Those are some verses that support that, that give proof to that concept. And then number five here, uh, the one God exists eternally as three distinct persons. And then you have verses uh, that clarify that one, and that also uh, give proof to that, that there are three persons of the Godhead, the one God. And so you can look up the, we're not gonna go through those verses tonight, uh, you can look through those verses later. And if you're ever, ever talking to somebody about this one God and three persons, these are good verses to know, to be able to stand your ground with that. But if we want a visible uh, representation of the whole, of the Trinity in concept, if we want to be able to somewhat see the Trinity in concept, we can take a look of, at what is called the, the shield of the Trinity. And that's what you see right there in the middle of your notes, the little triangular thing. And once again, we can't put God in a box to say, this is God. So, you know, but, but this does give us a visual representation of, of how the Godhead exists in some, to some extent. You see that the Father is God, right? You see that the Son is God, you see that the Holy Spirit is God. But then on the sides there, you see that the Father is not the Son, the Father is not the Holy Spirit, the Son is not the Holy Spirit, the Holy Spirit's not the Father. You see, you see that representation going on. And so as confusing as the Godhead is, there's a visual representation to help us maybe get a little bit more clarity. Uh, but number six here is that each person of the Trinity possesses the entire simple, undivided essence of God. Each person possesses the entire simple, undivided essence of God. This means that the three persons, though distinct from one another, they're co-equal in, in every perfection of the divine essence, pretty much. They're co-equal in every, every bit of perfection of the divine essence that he is. And so uh, you might ask the question, why, why is this, this understanding needed for us to really be able to grasp the study as a whole? Why, why do we need to understand the Trinity right now? Why, why are we breaking it down like this in order to move forward in the study and understand it as a whole? Well, because the complexity of God being one, that's, that's, that's hard enough, right? The idea of God being one, that there's, that's complex. Uh, and, and the three persons of the Trinity equally possessing the full, undivided essence, that makes a question come up. And the question is, how, how can these persons, how can they even be distinguished from one another? We're talking about one, we're talking about three, we're talking about co-equal, we're talking about undivided, we're, you know, all these. How can they be distinguished from one another then? Well, the best way to look at this is to look at Scripture itself, see how Scripture distinguishes the Godhead. Which brings us to number seven, which is that Scripture clearly distinguishes the persons of the Trinity as Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. And so we look no further than God's Word Himself about Himself. And these ideas, the Father, the Son, or these descriptions, the Father, the Son, uh, and the Holy Spirit, these are called the modes of subsistence, okay? Subsistence, not substance, but subsistence, the modes of subsis- subsistence, I can't even say the word. And uh, this, this is what reveals the personal properties, really, that distinguish each member of the Trinity from the others. That's, that's where, where it's going. And so by, just follow me here, this isn't on your notes, but by calling the first person the Father, by, by calling the first person of the Godhead, the Trinity, the Father, Scripture intends to attribute the personal property of paternity to Him with respect to the Son. And then by calling the second person the Son, Scripture intends to attribute the personal property, property of filiation or sonship to Him with respect to the Father. And by calling the third person the Spirit, the Holy Spirit, or actually sometimes Scripture just refers to the third person as Spirit, just that word alone. Scripture intends to attribute the personal property of spuration or procession to Him with respect to the Father and the Son. And so now things might get like a little bit confusing, okay? Just, just for the next few moments, but we have to get there. I promise it's necessary, uh, to understand where this whole study's gonna take us, okay? Number eight here, "By virtue of His paternity." By virtue of His paternity, the Father is unbegotten, but eternally, very important word, eternally begets the Son. And then it's the same words I used a while ago, so that, that's uh, paternity. Now, number nine, "By virtue of His filiation, the Son is begotten or eternally generated by the Father." And then number 10, "By virtue of His spuration, the Spirit proceeds from both the Father and Son." And so once again, for clarity, somewhat clarity, I want us to look at the Athanasian Creed. Uh, and it's down on the right side at the bottom, where it says this. "The Father was neither made, nor created, nor begotten from anyone. The Son was neither made nor created. He was begotten from the Father alone. The Holy Spirit was neither made nor created nor begotten. He proceeds from the Father and the Son." Okay, so this is where I'm going, okay? And this, and this is really the setup, uh, really of this whole study. It, it has to do with God's role and order. And so you might, I, I think we're done with our notes on the front page, go ahead and flip over your, your notes. This is where we're going, and this is the setup of the study. We have to understand God's role and order. I thought we needed a little bit of background on the Trinity. Hopefully it didn't confuse us anymore than we already usually are of the Trinity. He, God, God is just a confusing uh, concept for us to grasp. I don't even like using the word concept, that sounds heretical, but God is confusing to us because he's beyond us. But as far as God's role and order goes, the distinct modes of relationship that we just talked about. These distinct modes establish a definite order within the Trinity. That's your first answer there. They, they establish a definite order within the Trinity. And so, and, and I, I had, you know what? I had the Athanasian Creed up there and I forgot to show it to y'all and everything. Anyway, there's an order, and it's established by the modes we just talked about. So that means that it's proper to say, okay? And we're gonna, we're gonna hit A, B, and C real quick here, but it's proper to say, but before I say what it's proper to say, I need to say it's proper to say this with respect to their relationship only, okay? Not with respect to their essence, glory, or majesty. But it's proper to say that A, the Father is first. Within respect to the relationship only, B, the Son is second, and C, the Spirit is third. Not in essence, glory, or majesty, but in relationship only, and, and which means role and order. And this, it really helps us understand that while God operates a certain way within the bounds of Himself internally, uh, there's external works with the economy of redemption in which God, which are attrib- which are really attributed to each person of the Godhead as well. So God works within Himself, His own way. He does as He pleases. But there's also a way in which God works within the bounds of the idea of redemption. Um, this is external works, and um, and, and that's, that's where we see this role and order taking place. And so number two here is that the Father is particularly singled out as the Creator. We see that. And I think I put, yeah, I put some Scripture, uh, you can go and look at that Scripture later, that Scripture backs up that claim. "The Son is distinguished as the Redeemer and the Mediator." So there's two for you there, these, the Redeemer, oh, I already put mediator, but... So you see the Father as the Creator, the Son as the Redeemer and Mediator, and the Spirit is identified as the agent of sanctification. And once again, there's Scripture to back up those claims, and there's more too. So this is the layout of the external works of the Trinity within the economy of redemption, in which reflect the order established by the internal works of the external or eternal generation and procession within the divine life. I had to write that down. Clear as mud? All right. Put it simply, the Father sends the Son, and the Spirit is sent by the Father and the Son. That's number five. The Father sends the Son, and the Spirit is sent by the Father and the Son. And if all of this was super confusing, I'll remind you that the Trinity is a great mystery, right? The Trinity is just a great mystery, it's, it, the, for us to comprehend, we can't. It's beyond our comprehension. But remember this, okay, and this is number six, that all three persons of the Trinity work inseparably together. All three persons of the Trinity work inseparably together. No one person does any work exclusive of the other two persons of the Trinity. We have roles, we have these roles established, but no one person does any work all alone, on their own, hiding from the other, anything like that. So the question now is, why, why did we need this? Why did we need to, to look at this brain-melting uh, concept of the Trinity tonight? Well, we need to understand the role and order for so many reasons. Um, because as, as we engage in our study, we're, we're gonna see this concept come up over and over again. As we talk about false ideas, we're gonna see this concept come up over and over again. And so it brings clarity to misconceptions of the Holy Spirit, first of all. That's number one down there. Understanding the, the Trinity, understanding God's role and order within Himself and, and what He's established in that way, it brings clarity to misconceptions of the Holy Spirit. It puts a proper perspective, really, on the works of the Holy Spirit. And that's really important because that's gonna be the bulk of what we talk about, the works of the Holy Spirit. So it gives us a, a better perspective on those works. It removes the general fog or confusion, of confusion, that naturally exists about who God is. I mean, how many times have you tried to figure that out? How many times have you tried to, you know, do like the Patrick thing and like say, oh, he's like a four-leaf, or a three-leaf clover? He's like water, you know, how many times have you tried to do that? Well, hopefully seeing this and realizing like, yeah, we just don't understand, but we can grasp certain concepts. That gives a little bit of fog lifting to our minds. But then fourth, and this is a great one, it humbles us in a way that makes us wanna know more about God. It humbles us. God is so far beyond us. How often do we think that God needs to bend to our will? How often do you see people lifting up a hand, cursing God because he doesn't do what they want? How often do we think that, oh, God, why aren't you working in my life in the way that I want you to? Like, like he doesn't know what's better for us than ourselves? To, to just to see and to try to somewhat grasp the Trinity is a humbling thing, isn't it? To talk about God's role and order, to talk about begotten, to talk about the, the divine essence that's not separated, but there's three distinct persons, one God, all of that. He's so, he's so great, he's so beyond us, and yet even with that, he loves us enough to send His only begotten Son, to walk in our place and to die the death that we deserve. And I just think that if we can't be humbled by that, then I don't, I don't know what, what the answer is for us. But there, this, this was, this was quick, but a lot in this first part of the study. I promise you, from here on out, we're gonna focus on the topic of the Holy Spirit, and we're gonna look at different aspects. But with that being said, uh, I wanna, I just wanna open up a few minutes to ask you if you have any questions, maybe about what we said tonight, or if you have any questions that you wanna see come up in this study. Like I, like I said before, if you have the, the question of, well, what is it, you know, when am I baptized by the Holy Spirit? What does it mean to be baptized by the Holy Spirit? When does that take place? You know, things like that. Um, does anybody have any questions that you would like to, that either from tonight, or that you would like to see come up in this study?
So when you talk about, I mean, obviously, this is like a literally introduction to theology. When you talk about these things, and we, and we talk about the, the separation, like they're not the same, right? The Son is not the Father, the Father is the Holy Spirit, but they are God still. How does a non-believer, how do you crawl, walk, run into that? You know what I mean?
Yeah, the, my thing is, is if you're trying to indoctrinate somebody, a non-believer, I just think that's the wrong... I, I understand that they have the question, because, because it's like, that sounds like a contradiction. because it's like, that sounds like a contradiction. How am I supposed to believe that, right? Is that kind of where you're going with that?
What I mean is, yes, that, but also, what I have found oftentimes is they're like on some of these internet chat groups, right? They have these people who claim that, they make these claims that are just like, it's like splitting hairs, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And this is one of the subjects that often comes up where, you know, you point them, you point them to Jesus, right? You talk about all the things about Jesus being born, living a perfect life, going to the cross, dying three days later, being rose again, right? And you talk about that, and then they're like, but he's not God. Because he's the Son, right? But he claimed to be the, to be the I am, right? Specific scripture, but he makes allusions to that he is the Messiah, right? Many times talking to Pharisees.
Yeah.
I guess it's like, it's one of those things where, I mean, like the last, the last statement you said is like, it humbles us in a way that makes us know more about God. There are oftentimes that I just have to, I mean, it's exactly like that conversation we saw on the videos. You know, I give an example, I've given that exact same example of the Son, the exact same example of water. And they tell me that, oh, well, that's this, and that doesn't, that's, you know, da-da-da-da. And it's like, well, you know, like, I cannot fit, a God that I can fit into my brain, I do not wish to worship it.
Yeah.
I'm trying to point you in the direction based in human examples and our known existence, the things that I can see that are evidence.
Yeah. Well, and that's why I went to the Athanasian Creed, because I do think that despite some bit of ambiguity, ambiguity, whatever the word is, it's, it is clear to some extent, we worship one God in Trinity, in Trinity, in unity, neither confounding the persons nor dividing the substance. That gets rid of all those heresies that they were, you know, you know, the idea of Arianism and modelism Patrick, you know, all that stuff. But, you know, as far as anybody saying Jesus is not God, you can point them to the scriptures. Before, you know, before Abraham was, I am, right? Jesus makes many claims of his deity. We pretty much hit on him, it seems like every Wednesday night, and I say, if anybody says that Jesus said he wasn't God, then they're wrong. They're not reading scripture. So there's the answer to that. But then, of course, the idea of begotten Son and all that, the Athanasian Creed is longer than what I just read. And we have another part of the Athanasian Creed at the bottom down there, which, you know, talks about the fact, it speaks into the eternality of the Godhead along with an established order of the Godhead. Because the Father's not created, right? The Son's not created, the Spirit's not created, but the Son was sent by the Father. And then, of course, the Spirit was sent by the Father and the Son. And so, you see eternality on one end, like this idea of, when we think, if I beget a child, well, I've created a child. Well, okay, the idea of his only begotten Son speaks about the virgin birth. That's, you know, it's not in a sense of eternity. And when we think of eternity, we think future. I'm talking eternity as a whole, eternity past and future. We're eternal beings, but we're not eternal beings like God is, right? We're eternal from creation till the rest. God's always been, he set apart from us in that way. And so, the Father, the Son, and the Spirit have eternally coexisted as three persons, one God. And you just keep coming back to that because that's the most simple statement to make about, you know, without, if we try to explain that, we will slip into error.
So then even when Jesus was born, he was walking, teaching, right? Is he still holy God, holy man, right? And how does that levy what we just like went through? Like, is it, he's still, he's still holy man, holy God, right?
Yeah. But truly, I'd say truly. Pull that from R.C. Sproul. Truly God, truly man. And this, I talked about this in the incarnation series, and I don't like using this language because it makes me feel like, it's the only word I can think of to describe what happened. And I still don't like saying it, but it's not that Christ took away from his deity. He added humanity to it. I don't even like saying that because it's, we just can't grasp it really. But that's the only way I can put it into words. But as far as, if you're talking to non-believers, I feel like that whole, that whole idea, we have to remember that when speaking to non-believers, they just simply need the Word of God. The Word of God is what impacts their hearts. Yes, give them some clarity, give them some truth that they're debating on it. Speak scripture to them because God does the work. And one of the biggest falsehoods of Satan is to get caught up in theology. Satan's a master at theology, you know? And he's a master at twisting theology. And so, we have to realize that if we are speaking to non-believers, then we gotta go back to scripture, let God's Word work in their heart. Once he takes that heart of stone, puts it in a heart of flesh, the Holy Spirit will do the work in them with their theology. And so, that's where I would, that's what I would say, you know? Always go back to that.
This is kind of interesting. I didn't exactly put this together, but back in Matthew 3, verse 17, "And behold, a voice from heaven said, 'This is my beloved Son, whom I am well pleased.'" Obviously, Jesus didn't say that.
Yeah.
Was that an audible voice that everybody standing around heard it?
Well, it says, "And when Jesus was baptized, immediately he went up from the water, and behold, the heavens were open to him, and he saw the Spirit of God descending." But somebody had to observe this too, right? And so, I mean, I would say, yeah, it says, "A voice from heaven said." I wouldn't take that figuratively. I would take that literally because of the whole scene that's happening is a very literal scene.
And if it said, "This is my beloved Son," it has to be God that's spoken.
The Father. Yeah. Yeah. So you see, that's why I'm saying you see all three interacting, all three persons of the Godhead. You see the Spirit descending as a dove. See the Son standing there in the water. And then you hear the thundering voice of the Father speaking about the Son because he is the Father. So, not the Son's the Father, but the Father's speaking about the Son. Yeah, and there's discrepancies too, I would say. Like even with the burning bush, some people would say, wasn't an angel of the Lord speaking? Or was it the Lord speaking? You know? I mean, there's different people have, and then people view the pre-incarnate Christ in certain ways, you know? As him communicating with people, God speaking to Moses. So there's, you know, there's different scenes of that, but that's why I went to Matthew 3, because if anybody wants to deny the concept of the Trinity, it's right there. I mean, let's try to talk our way out of that. I mean, I don't know how you do it. You have to be very, very clever, hermeneutically, to talk your way out of that passage of scripture to say that there's not a triune God. And by the way, when I say the Godhead, I mean the same thing as the Trinity. So I might, I think I said both of those words tonight. That's just a word used to describe God, and both, the Godhead is the Trinity, the Trinity is the Godhead. Same thing.
So with other denominations of Christianity, some might refer to the Holy Spirit as the Holy Ghost. And is, you know, oftentimes, it'll be denominations that kind of are just very, very kind of outlandish, outrageous occasionally.
Yeah.
Is, are they just similar words, but just different versions of the Bible? Or is it something that's kind of not scripturally correct?
I don't, I don't think that saying the Holy Ghost is wrong. And don't hold me to this. I don't know the history on where that came, but if I could imagine the history of where it came, it came from a time where ghost was used to speak of as spirit, like in that era. And so, maybe that's where it caught on, the Holy Ghost, really, the Holy Spirit. It was just the language at some time, and it just stuck. Don't hold me to that. I have no idea. Might have to look that one up, but that's what I could imagine happened. Now, at the same time, if, if there is, if there does happen to be some like overly charismatic sect of Christianity out there referring to the Holy Spirit as a Holy Ghost, and they're trying to make these manifestations of what a ghost would be like, you know, like the glitter that Elevation Church does and all that kind of stuff. Yeah, they're in error for sure.
It's visualized when ghosts is different than when it's a spirit.
Yeah, totally. Yeah, it's like, it ain't Casper, yeah, you know? And so, you know, when we think ghosts, you know, some people are like, I saw a ghost, and it phased into the wall. It's like you saw something. Well, spirit's unseen. A spirit is unseen, the spirit is unseen. And so, there would be your discrepancy there, but I think more so, the Holy Ghost probably came from just a different time of language, I bet. Don't know for sure. That's my guess. Probably totally wrong, yeah.
Philippians 2, cover some of the ground of Christ coming to earth. Would you, want to review that real quick?
Philippians 2.
Verse 5. And they're talking about being among the joys in Christ. I'll read it if you want to do.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll follow along with you.
What this mind being used to the loss of the Christ Jesus, the joyfulness, but who being in the form of God thought of not robbery to equal with God, but made himself of no reputation, and took upon him the form of a servant, who was made in the likeness of men, and being as faithful as a man, he humbled himself and became obedient to death, even the death of the cross. So I think that's supporting information, supporting scripture for the Holy Trinity and how it's, you know, it's working here for your.
Yeah. And so, what exactly you say, like the idea of him not counting equality with God? Are you saying that? Or are you just saying that it falls along in the same lines of? Yeah.
Learning about the Holy Trinity, the Holy Spirit, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. This is some defining scripture of, you know, Christ coming to earth in the form of a man.
Yeah, and I would say that like even here, you see Paul affirming like the eternality of Christ, of course. So, yeah, yeah, I agree with you there. And of course, you know, using the words like form and stuff like that, we gotta realize this too. God uses what's called anthropomorphic language in his word, and really, it's anthropology's, the study of humans. So for God to use anthropomorphic language, or you see anthropomorphic attributes given to God, like the strong arm of God, well, God's spirit, he doesn't have an arm, right? The mind of God, well, God's spirit, he doesn't have a brain. He doesn't have limited capability, he doesn't, we have a limited capacity that our brains can hold. God's so expansive because he doesn't have a brain. That sounds horrible to say, God doesn't have a brain, but it's true, right? But we see these, this language, so like when we see form and stuff like that, we gotta realize that God talks to us in baby talk so that we can kind of grasp him somewhat. And in this baby talk that we get, this anthropomorphic language or descriptions of himself, it's just God speaking to us on our level, but he is above that. He is beyond that. And so, we have to kind of take some, like when we see, like I said, the word form and stuff like that, we have to have more of an understanding of the Godhead in order to not fall into heresy in that. So, I don't know if I hit on what you were asking for or not just then, but yeah, I agree with you that that does fall in lines with affirming the Trinity to, you know, for sure.
I know you're gonna talk about being filled with the Spirit. Very interested to hear what you have to say about that. Because I've got friends from other denominations that are in spirit, you know, and they do the holy breathing or whatever. Currently not friends with them, but I have. In that study, don't answer it now, maybe it's too long, and we don't want to sit here forever, but to have the Holy Spirit dwell among us, I have that idea of in our room, you know, in our presence, right? In our worship service, but yet, he dwells in us too. Is there a possibility, just saying this, guys, is there a possibility if he's in our room and dwelling in us? Is there, for some reason, one or two of us that he wouldn't be inside of for whatever reason? Or is it, I don't know, you get the feeling of like, it's a feeling, you know?
Yeah.
You can't see a spirit, but yet, the Bible does say he's in our presence, right? He's in our midst, or we say that.
Yeah. I can. I'll do that. I'll dive into it more, but the quick answer, like the very surface answer on that is just understanding the idea of spirit. The fact that God is spirit, he encompasses everything, right? And so, that's why God is omnipresent because he's spirit. He can be everywhere, all at once. So that's the, you know, I think the short answer is understanding spirit and then understanding the idea of dwelling with us, or he's inside of us. You know, the talk of the Spirit living inside of us is the talk of the new nature in Christ. And so, there are people on a Sunday morning, there could be people in here right now. You know, there's always, even among the gathering of the church, there are people that are not and dwell with the Holy Spirit because they're not born again. And does that mean that there's like a dark spot in the sanctuary where they're sitting or whatever? No. But it does mean that they are not made alive in Christ. They're not, they don't have the Holy Spirit working within them as their advocate to be free from sin, to have the power over sin. So it's talking about, you know, that language of God being everywhere and God being in us is two different things. And one has to do with our sanctification, our salvation sanctification, and the other just has to do with his nature, I guess. I don't know, but I'll hit on that more too.
I was on a Christian theater group, and I remember some people of that group, and we would pray, you know, because we're all about, you know, inviting the Lord to be a part of our group. And I can remember some people would say, Lord, you know, before we put on our productions, we give you the first row, you sit in the front row. And it was a visual again, you know, but we honor you, Lord. We want you to be here with us tonight when we put on this play or whatever. And I just could get that out of my head, you know, like, you think of this mighty rushing wind, or he's whipping around. I think Hollywood has shown us that in movies, but
Yeah.
That's probably not correct, but doesn't the Bible talk about a fire or something with light on people or a wind?
Yeah, yeah. Well, the spirit's described as, I mean, even the word, the pneuma word, it's, it means breath or wind or spirit. So there's different, you know, descriptions for just that word, but yeah, and you see, you see, I mean, Jesus, when he's speaking to Nicodemus, talks about it in John chapter 3. When he's talking about, you don't, you don't see where the wind comes from or where it goes, but you're affected by it. You get to witness its effects. He's referring to the Spirit, and he's also referring back to Old Testament scripture that speaks in that same language. So there's, once again, there's descriptiveness about, about God and how he works. And God can manifest himself in any way. He can manifest himself as a burning bush. He can manifest himself as a pillar of fire. There's so many different, you know, there's, that's a distinction too that we have to understand is the manifestations of God, you know, they don't take away from the deity, they don't take away from the overall character of God or the overall attributes of God either. He's not limiting himself in his manifestations, so.
It's very interesting as you think about it all the time.
Yeah, I agree. All right. Any other, anything that anybody wants to see come up in the study? I'll hit on that one. Any questions? Y'all got some charismatic friends that get a little crazy sometimes, and you gotta talk them off a cliff? Nobody? Just me? Okay. Kelsey, I'll tell you what, she's...
I used to think that because we prayed to our Father, that he was the most important of all. And you say, that's not true, we're all equal. But I consider him higher than the other two.
Well, if you're thinking in the terms of what we talked about tonight, role in order, he's first, but he is not as far as the respect that God gets. God gets respect, and so, when I say that, the whole triune, each person of the Godhead gets respect, right? Deserves the same and total equal respect. As far as the essence of God. As far as the essence of God, the, the, the whole triune God is equal in essence. And so it's a hard concept to grasp. And that's, and that's really why I wanted, and I, you know, go back through and look back at the notes because it, it, it might take some revisiting. But there's definitely an order established and we see that. But that doesn't take away from one or the other person.
Well, the Father sent his only begotten Son, so the Son did his job in essence. God sent Jesus to die on the cross for us.
Yeah.
And then He left the Holy Spirit to guide us.
Yes.
So He is, He is more or less still here.
Well, but, but the Holy Spirit?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I mean, and, and the Holy Spirit's everywhere, but yes. So, so, and remember this too, it doesn't mean that Jesus is like taking a nap now. He's, He's our mediator. And that's why He's still eternally, and He will forever be, the God-man because He will eternally be our mediator. But also, what did Jesus say when He spoke to His disciples that last time? "All authority on heaven and on earth, on earth has been given to me," right? And that's, that's the idea of, okay, this time of, of this humble disposition's over. And now I'm going back where I belong, you know, in a sense, I'm, I'm, I'm taking back up the throne, the right hand of God, which would mean second in, second in command in our understanding, second in order, as we would talked about tonight, but does not, does not make Him in any way inferior to the Father. So, and, and because the spirit's at work, you know, doesn't mean that the Father and the Son are both like taking vacation or anything. Once again, they all work together and, and not independent of each other, so. But it's confusing. There's a lot to it, I mean, there really is, yeah. But I think, but, but the whole reason, and I really hope I didn't like bring a bunch of confusion with the talk about the Trinity, but if I would have skipped this in our, and just went right into some of the works of the Holy Spirit, I feel like we'd have a misunderstanding from the get-go because we need to understand God's role and order. That's the most important thing. That God's role and order doesn't take away from one person or the other, but it does put a particular order to the external works of God on us. What, what God's doing in, in, in the area of redemption of mankind, He, He's, He's established an order. And, and so as we talk about the Holy Spirit moving forward, we'll understand why the Holy Spirit points to the Son. That's going to be one of them. We're going to talk about the fact that one, one of the roles of the Holy Spirit is to point us to Jesus, to remind us of the work of the cross, to remind us of our Savior who came and did what the Father had sent Him to do, right? So we see this order happening again. And so that's why it's important, so we can understand this when we get deeper into the conversation. Because like I said, there's some charismatic circles out there that they so, that they worship like the Holy Spirit only. You know, it's, it's like everything's all about the Holy Spirit, it's like, who's the Father, who's the Son? And if, if that's the case, well, then they're not listening to the Holy Spirit because the Holy Spirit points us always back to Jesus. So it's, it's, that, that's where, that's why we need to get that, you know, we need to get that role and order down. And so that's why we went there tonight. All right. Any last something or another?
Session one, number 10, what was the, the feminine life mantra?
On the front, front page? Oh, aspiration, yeah, so. By virtue of His filiation, yeah. And I really, like, you know, the Athanasian Creed, we used it tonight, it's not scripture, okay? Just remember that. And anything that's not scripture is prone to error. And anytime we try to describe God, we're prone to error. But I do think that the Athanasian Creed puts it as simply as we can maybe understand, so. You know, fun fact, was it the Nicene or the Athanasian Creed that they were trying to do at the SBC, Kels? Do you remember? Was it Athanasian? Or maybe it was Nicene? Huh? Okay, nevermind.